Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting and welcome to West Orange High School. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting and welcome to West Orange High School. As you may know, as of a few weeks ago, we changed the format of our agenda. So we've already done roll call when we moved to executive session earlier. So now it's time for the public session. There are no minutes on this agenda, so that's one change to the agenda. And we'll move right into the superintendent and board reports, which will be the board's self-evaluation and the board's goals. So I invite Ms. Charlene Peterson from New Jersey School Board Association to come up to the microphone and facilitate us.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here this evening.
Good evening, Charlene.
And I provided for all of you on the compilation of the board's self-evaluation, and there should also be some charts, and then also an additional sheet on the eight characteristics of effective school boards. So just wanted to start to kind of give a brief overview to the audience here, and I guess the audience at home, to let you know that it used to be required by the state that boards had to complete a board's self-evaluation. And about four or five years ago, the board relaxed, or the state relaxed that requirement. And now we say that those boards that continued with this process do it because it's a good governance process. If you think about the fact that you hold the rest of the district accountable, this is your way of holding yourselves accountable. And if you look at practices of high-performing boards, of high-performing organizations, one of those qualities they have in common is that they do self-assess. Take that step back, reflect it how you have done in the past year, and use that to help drive the work that you do moving forward. So the way that this process works is that each one of you individually filled out the board's self-evaluation. And so then what I'm delivering this evening for you is the compilation of your individual responses. So I am pleased to say that all five of you filled it out. And as I'm talking about the compilation, I guess recognize that I am relating back to you the comments that you made, the information that you provided, and not necessarily any input that I'm providing. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through this briefly. So wanted to let you know that the compilation is on a 4.0 scale. And as we look at it, looked at, you know, your board's scores, and the range that the board worked from was a low of 2.4 in board performance and a high of 3.4 in board and staff with an overall board rating of a 2.9. Just to kind of put that in context, usually New Jersey school boards, kind of the rule of thumb is anything under a 3.0 is an area that the board should be looking at to give more attention and consideration to, and your average score is under that. So you're going to find that quite a few categories then are under a 3.0 as we go through this. So, you know, I hope that we'll take this, you know, from the perspective of as you set board goals, as you look at ideas, if, you know, for a board retreat, and ways that you as a board can continue to improve the way you work, that you would be using information from this board's self-evaluation, you know, and take that into consideration. So like I said, having said that, the first page is what we talk about, what we value, what's important to you as a board. From New Jersey school board's perspective, what we look at is to see where you evaluated or how you evaluate student achievement. If you look at it on here from the perspective of your board, it's actually the lowest score you gave the board on the front page of a 3.4. And so we're hoping that you'll recognize that that's what drives the work that you do. It should be the focus of the work that you do. It should be the most important work that you do. So hope that as you, again, use this as a tool to kind of help where we need more professional development, where we need to focus more of our efforts, need to look at it from that perspective. I mean, the areas that the board rated the highest in terms of things it valued was policy, finance, and board and community. So sometimes as you look at those things, sometimes it's a picture of what's going on in the district in the past year, and it may be that you've had some issues or, you know, need to focus on those things. But just want to remind you that regardless of any of those, at all times, student achievement should be a priority of the work that you do. So as we turn the page then and look at the individual indicators, one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention is that there were two parts to this board's self-evaluation for each one of the indicators. That the top part is how you evaluated that the board works together as a team, how the board of a whole performs in these areas. And then the bottom section of each one was how you evaluated yourself as an individual board member. So as we look at the first one, planning, I wanted you to see the difference in the score between the board score was a 2.8, but the individual scores were a 3.8. And as we go through this, you'll see a similar trend, that the individual scores are higher than the board's scores. And again, that's not something that we would like to see, that ideally there should be some synergy in you working together as a team. And as a board, you should be able to accomplish more than any of you can do individually. So wanted to make you aware of that difference there. And then also for you to just kind of look at the fact that through most of this, you'll see that you're not on the same page with a lot of these things. That as you look at some of these indicators, you'll see that two of you might think you're commendable in the same thing that two of you think you're unsatisfactory in. So with their only B, and in some of them, each one of you has a different box jacked. So, you know, it's one of the things that's also coming out of this is that you're, you know, really not working together as well as you could as a team, and that you have different perspectives about what you're doing well and what you need to work on. So, you know, but the one thing that you did all have in common on the bottom of the planning was the fact that you all recognized the importance of meaningful public participation and that you support the district's vision, mission, and goal. So that's, you know, that's important, that we have that focus and that we have that direction. And then now trying to figure out how to provide that public participation is, you know, is usually the most challenging part of this. Then the next section is policy. And here again, as you look at policy, as you look at the scoring, you can see again across the top that, you know, are again not on the same page in terms of different people looking at it differently. But it also helps tell us whether you recognize your role and that the board's role is as a policymaking body, and that the implementation and the day-to-day operation of the district is the responsibility of the administration. So you can see from that standpoint then that the board is in agreement with recognizing, you know, what your role is in this process. It's just kind of a more a question of as you read through the comments, kind of recognizing what your responsibilities are as a policymaking body and how as a board you can best do that. So again, would be an area probably where further discussion and, you know, as you look at areas for board goals for consideration. Yes?
As I'm looking at the policy, I also noticed a correlation in something else. The operates as a policymaking body got an average of a 2.8, so it's less than a 3, and that's an issue. When we look at the score that pulled that section down, because that was followed by in that section, 3.4, 3.2, 3.6, then you have a 2.4. That 2.4 was ensures that the administration develops appropriate procedures and regulations to implement the board's policy intent. So I think that that's also an indication for us that that had to do with how we do in terms of follow-up monitoring from a governance standpoint in our interface with the administration. Because that's what pulled the score down, and that's the two lowest scores in that section. Pulled the overall average down, those are the two things.
Okay. And then the next section was student achievement. So here, I think it was important again that the board indicated on the bottom that all five of you agree that you are aware of the community's educational aspirations. And I can say that for a lot of boards, that's a lot of times that's a challenge of them not knowing what that is. So, you know, for as much as we feel like we need to engage your community, I think you also, it sounds like you get yourselves out into the community, that you have some community members coming here, that you are aware of what's important to your community. And that's important as you look at the student achievement initiatives as the district. It's not uncommon, if you look at, again, the area goes back to monitoring, and it's not uncommon for most boards that of all these board's self-evaluations, if I were to close my eyes and not even know what district it's from, almost all boards rate themselves lower on both the monitoring of the goals piece and also the monitoring of the effectiveness of the educational programs, because it's just an area that we're just learning, how do we get better at this? How do we know, you know, that the right things are happening here? And as a board, learning how to practice that oversight part of our role.
In that section, I see that the monitoring was a 2.6. And while that, you know, certainly may be a shared quality with other boards, that simply, that does mean that's something we need to look at. Also low in that section with a 2.6 was requires written curriculum with specific evaluation components in accordance with all statutes. So to me, it goes back to a governance issue in terms of student achievement as an area of governance.
Okay. And you can see, you know, that there's a lot of comments here, and it's something that as a board, it's something that this is, you'll want to read, you know, when you've got more time to kind of digest and go through this. And that's why I said this is kind of the foundation to be used toward further work that you do, knowing that, you know, if you're going to set board goals or look at areas where you might want to have some professional development or a board retreat, that it would typically be things that the board has identified in here that would require additional focus on your part. Then the next section was finance. So again, you know, it's important that as a board, you know, usually we say that it's, you know, a challenge for boards that you have to take into consideration the needs of the community, and then balance the needs of the community and the taxpayers with the educational needs of your students. And it's becoming more and more of a challenging and difficult balance. And it sounds like as a board, you know, you understand that balance, understand what your responsibilities are. And I thought it was great to see that five of you said that you were commendable and understanding and participating in the budgeting process. And then the next section was board operations. So here's an area that you talk about, kind of your method of governance. So for you as a board, your method of governance is that you work together as a board of the whole. So that's the way that you as a board accomplish the work that you need to do. So I guess in particular, if you look at the top, the second one, you know, one of the things that I always look at in the board's self-evaluation is number two, saying, looking at the climate that allows for free, openly, and orderly discussion by all members at our meeting. So to me, your meetings are where you get your work done, that the discussion should be taking place, and that's how, you know, each one of us has the opportunity to participate. So for the board to give it a score, you know, with three of you saying it was adequate and two of you saying it was unsatisfactory, again, it's almost closed, it's the second lowest score on this whole board's self-evaluation that you filled out. So as a board, where, you know, your meetings and your participation in the meetings, this is where you should be getting your work done. So for you to say that it's not happening in a way that works for you, you know, would definitely suggest an area that further work is needed.
Would that be an area where we could have in-district training? Have you come in and go over PD with us as it relates to board norms?
Yes, absolutely.
And procedures? Okay. So maybe we should look at that as one of our goals tonight.
And that's something that's becoming more and more important. Boards are recognizing that how you work together makes a big difference in terms of, you know, your impact on student achievement, and recognizing that while we have the code of ethics, that considering that to be kind of the minimum accepted behavior, the minimum expectations, and that as a board, you should have higher expectations of yourself in outlining and identifying what those expectations are that you as a group would like to follow to ensure that you are working together as a team and getting the work done that you need to accomplish. And, you know, I also thought it was, you know, significant that two of you said that your method of governance doesn't ensure appropriate communication to the full board, which that should be one of the most important, you know, pieces of the work that you do is making sure that you all have the information that you need and, you know, so communication's a big piece of that. And then the next section was board performance. So here's where we talk more about confidentiality, about trust, coming to the meetings prepared. And this is the area where the overall board score is the lowest. When I said the lowest score the board had given itself was a 2.4, this is where that 2.4 is. And if you look at number four, works together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect, you can see that this is the lowest score that the board gave itself on the entire board's self-evaluation, that it gave itself a score of 1.4. So I think it says a lot, I guess, about the way you feel that you're all working So definitely an area that there needs to be some, you know, some work there.
From your experience, from different boards, where various board members have different methodologies, and perhaps have different methodologies of reaching decisions versus what I'll call group think, and overall, everyone's the same. So what are some of the things that you have seen work to get boards to work better together?
Some of it is more coming to that common understanding of what that common vision is, what the expectations are that you want for your students, what you want for your district. You know, one of the things, and if you look on here, the sheet that I gave you of the eight characteristics of effective boards, that is a study that was done on high-performing boards and what are some things that they have in common. So if you look at those things, look at kind of trying to model your behavior and kind of looking at things that are considered effective, that work, versus the things that kind of are the dozen danger signs. And if you look at some of the things that are in your board's self-evaluation, they probably cover a lot of the areas of the danger signs. So it's more, you know, if you think about the fact that you are, if you look at all of you seated at this table, you're one team. So even though you have individual thoughts, you have individual skills, you're a talented group sitting at this table as you look at what you bring to this table. So how do you view yourselves? How do you view the work that you do as a governance team with, as a governance body? You're responsible for strengthening this body, building this body, looking at the work that you do, not as individuals, but you are a team, you are a group. How do you make, how is the fact that you are sitting on this board make this team better? And that's how you need to view the work that you are doing and come to a way of, because it looks like there's operational things on here that we can work on, like how do I get things on the agenda? How do I talk? So coming to an idea about how, as a team, you know, if we think about the fact that student achievement is our common goal, regardless how, what difference of opinions we have, regardless what different mindsets we come, the fact that we can all focus on that and come together on that, for most boards, that's enough for them when they're sitting at this board table to make that be their focus and work together from that perspective.
So that being said, looking at our self-evaluation, it indicates that for the various broad items such as planning, policy, finance, various items, we all acknowledge that these are very important values. In fact, we pretty much are at the top four, which is the highest. But yet, when it comes to the actual process and implementation of those objectives, we, it appears from the empirical data that we have very different methodologies of coming to how to achieve those goals. That's what, that's what the data appears to be. So we all, we all agree that policy's very high, planning's very high, board operations, finance, go down the line. But when you look at the, so therefore, we, the good part is, we all agree on what we would, what we need to achieve. It's the process and the methodologies of going about that that it appears that we have differences of opinions on how one, how we as, as a district and as a board achieve those goals. So now, I, that, with that preamble, my question to you is, what are some suggestions that you can make to us in order to improve that? Improve our own differences in methodologies?
And really, the best way to do that is to have a board retreat, to actually talk about these things, to lay it out on the table, to come up with a plan, you know, have a meeting just for the training, just for the sole purpose of working on these things. Because again, I think, you know, like you've said, the important piece is that we value the right thing, so now how do we, you know, change the work that we do to make it all come together? So to me, that's the part that can be fixed, versus if you didn't value the right things, that's a more challenging part to fix. So...
I agree in principle, but if we look at where we value, we do value most of the correct things and most of the same things. But there's a correlation between the score that we gave ourselves for student achievement, which is under a 3, meaning it's a problem area, and the rating that we gave for student achievement with a 3.4, when there were other areas we gave a 5. And student achievement is our number one raison d'etre. So there's a direct correlation here. And that would say that if we, you know, before even getting to process, in terms of priorities, we go back to the four Ps or five Ps, whatever you want to, from a priority standpoint, that we would have to look at how we should realign our priorities to elevate our number one reason for being in student achievement, and that, and then how that correlates with how we actually execute against student achievement.
And just so you know, in the graphs that I gave you, that's what the very first graph is.
Yes.
Is it compares what you said you valued in each category.
And how we perform against it.
And how you...
Yes. No, that graph, it was beautiful. This is beautifully done. And the other thing, going back to what Erv was talking about from a process, well, I think it's still process and priority standpoint, when we look at board performance, the 1.4 and the 4, works together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect, followed by the very next one, the 2.4, ensures that all members have input into decisions. There's definitely an interconnectedness there, that if people feel that all members are not getting input into decisions, that by itself, in addition to other factors, will naturally undermine a sense of trust, because then you feel like you're not really being included, not a part of it, or intentionally being excluded. And that undermines trust. So I would look there for certainly an opportunity that can be addressed from a process and priority standpoint as to how do we operate better to make sure that all of our input is actually included in making decisions? And it could even go to input on the agendas, it could go to input how we work together and the input on goals and planning, et cetera.
But I agree with that, but you also have to look at the difference too in this one between the top score and the bottom score. It's probably the biggest...
Yes.
Variation. So again, it goes back to how you perceive the work that you're doing versus how you perceive that the work of the team is doing and the opportunity to...
Well, that disparity, I think, goes to, in slightly positive way, to one thing you mentioned. I think all of us, to some extent, know what it is we bring to the table for the team. But it's like having a special forces team, where we each have a specific area of specialty. Where still, it still goes back to how do we use, utilize all these wonderful talents and come together in a cohesive team and a collaborative, thank you, good word, collaborative team? And that's what I was looking back for, what things can we pull out that indicate the need for greater collaboration? And the input was one that stood right out. Absolutely.
Good. Okay. And then the next section is board and superintendent relationships. So here we look at, you know, making sure as a board, like, do you recognize, you know, the importance of, here it goes back to communication, trust, respect, each group's making sure that you understand your respective roles and work together within your respective roles. And I think for the most part, if you look at this, you know, if there were some areas that you, a lot of areas that you were on the same page of, you know, four of you saying the board was commendable and keeping the superintendent informed about what's going on, respecting the management responsibility of the superintendent, observing the chain of command. So here's some areas where as a board, you do recognize that difference between what your role is and that of the superintendent.
Charlene, I just have a question. Is this on? I just have a question on the bottom part about you as the board member. Since we have one board member who's conflicted under item C, should, one of those five should have been not observed versus unsatisfactory or commendable?
I mean, that's, I think that happened...
Might have been a typo.
Well, I don't know if it's a typo or not, but regardless, it does bring the score.
Good catch.
Because if you're conflicted, you're not observing.
Well, and I think that's on number five on the top, that's probably a result of that being there, but perhaps not on the bottom.
Okay.
Good catch.
And then the next section was board and staff relationships. So this is the area that the board evaluated itself the highest at the 3.4. And as you look on the top, the, talked about the board recognizing the importance of staff development. And, you know, as we talk about the board's relationship with the staff, if you think about observing the chain of command and all of your communication goes through the superintendent, so how then do you as a board have a relationship with the staff? And that's one of the ways that you would do it, making sure, do you appropriately recognize your staff? Do you provide for their professional development needs? Do you have policies and, you know, good personnel policies in place for your staff? So those are ways that you as a board, you know, that's how you would determine your relationship with the staff.
You know, this really does vividly demonstrate that we have a high regard. We really love our staff and know that we are, that we have a very talented and dedicated staff, and that's reflected here.
Great. And then the last section is board and community. And this was the second highest area that the board evaluated itself at a 3.3. And, you know, here again, I think it goes back to the board having a good relationship with the community, because for a lot of boards, this is their most challenging area of trying to figure out... of trying to figure out how to do that. So you can see that there were a couple of areas where all five of you were in agreement, that the board, commendable in promoting community use of school facilities, and that you listen to and consider community input when making your decision-making. So again, you know, recognizing the importance of the relationship between the board and the community, and I think somebody commented on the first comment down below, that this might be one of the board's biggest strengths. So, you know, just again, an area, and I guess that the numbers kind of agree with that, like I said, with it being your second highest rating.
I think a lot of that rating was pulled up too by the strategic planning process. That was the highest level of engagement and input and collaboration with the community that we probably ever had. And I don't remember what the scores for previous year, but I'm willing to bet it wasn't quite as high.
The third chart on there is actually compares this year to last year, so that would be a way for you to look at that as well.
Yeah, we looked at that one.
So are there any other questions on the standards? Okay, then there were two open-ended questions that you were asked, recognizing that the board's highest priority is to improve student achievement. What are the three major challenges facing the district? And as I look through it, try to find some areas that you had common responses. And, you know, not surprising, we talked about, you know, so you talked about the budget constraints, the impact on your programs, the unfunded mandates, you know, how important it is to meet all the varying needs of your students, the focus or the standardized test scores that you as a board are working with. And then you were asked to look at your role as a policymaking body, and what kind of training would you find helpful? And here again, there are all kinds of ideas that you had in here. So I think it's important that we take this board self-evaluation and use that as, you know, something for us to, as a resource, as we do look at ways to increase training for the board. And then, again, wanted to just briefly go through the three charts. So like I said, the first one was comparing what we said we valued to how we actually rated ourself in that category. The second chart compares the top scores, how you evaluated the board versus how you evaluated yourself as an individual, again, hoping that the board's scores would be higher. And then the third one, third chart, is comparing last year's scores to this year's scores. So you can see, it looks like, I think, in almost, I guess, in every area, right, the board went down from how it evaluated itself the previous year. So certainly can't say that you weren't honest and didn't give this a lot of thought. And I think that that's what makes a difference, is that, you know, this is a tool for you. So it's, you know, it says a lot about the fact that you took the time, filled it out, provided the comments, so that it is a working and meaningful tool for you, again, to help the board move forward. Does anyone have any additional questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. This is awesome, Charlene. Thank you for all you do.
Now, the second item there is board goals for next year. So I'm going to ask the board to review the board's self-evaluation, and we're going to draft board goals, okay? So maybe next Monday's agenda, we'll come back with draft board goals that we can all discuss, unless you're prepared to discuss some board goals now. I would suggest one being professional development based on our self-evaluation that was just taking place, okay? We can talk about it now, but...
I prefer to read this.
Yeah.
I agree.
I want to read it as well.
Let's analyze the data. We're always talking about making proper decisions before analyzing the data.
Yes, we should analyze the data. Based on the breakdown Charlene just gave us, it's obvious we need to do some PD together as a whole board, as opposed to individual board members. No, board retreats.
I think that was therapeutic.
I don't think we've had a...
That was a retreat.
We haven't had a board retreat as a whole board in a couple of years, I think.
Bachelor in Atlantic City.
No, it's right here, Mark. Okay. Are there any questions from the public on the agenda? If you have a question or comment, please come forward. There's a three-minute timer on the clock if you would like to make a question or ask a question or make a comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Don't everybody come at once.
Anyone? Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Calavano? Let's see. May I have a motion, please, for personnel, one through three? May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion by the board? I want to congratulate Honorina Carrera on retirement, Spanish teacher at the high school. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Does anyone else have a comment? Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for curriculum and instruction? Item one.
I'll move that.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
Just that it's nice to see that we're continuing the partnership with King University regarding the Holocaust studies, and we do have our president, Sandra Mordecai, to thank for that from years ago. Thank you, Sandy.
Yes, you're welcome. This took a long time in coming. I remember in 2010, sitting down with one of our former superintendents and assistant superintendent with department head at King University, make this happen. And this is a great program. I believe 28 of our faculty across the district attended master's degree classes at King at no cost to them, and they received six credits tuition-free. And at some point, we have to discuss our high school curriculum, because along with this, we were supposed to get high school courses, which would get college credits for, yeah, for each of our students. So hopefully, that second part of it will come to fruition soon. Thank you for your hard work in getting that. Mr. Rutske.
Okay, I am glad to see that there's an engineering workshop that one of our faculty is attending. That's great. Okay. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay, now it's time for reports from the board president and our board members. I guess I'll go first. We had the opportunity to go to Atlantic City for Board of Education Workshop last week. It was quite a busy week. All of us went for most of the week or part of it. Want to say, the highlight of my four days down there was attending courses that were taught by our very own Debbie Cohen here. So that was, you know, a proud moment for me to see our faculty down in Atlantic City presenting. I took her class, that was a K-12 STEM class. She also has a STEM class for special ed students. I didn't take that class, I took it last year, so I didn't take it again this year. But it was very good to see her present. She also co-presented with members of the NJIT, I forget what everything stands for, New Jersey Technological Engineering, and I forget what the last E stands for, but she co-presented with other faculty from other districts. So it was really, really good to see her in action. We've also been attending quite a few football games, but I'll leave that for my colleague, Mr. Charles. And that's all I have. Mr. Charles? Football update?
You caught me a little off-guard. So, yeah, this past weekend was senior night, and the weekend before that was homecoming. It was nice to see quite a big crowd there. The band did a spectacular job again, the cheerleaders and the football team. This past week, like I said, was senior day. We honored the football seniors, the band seniors, and the cheerleading. It was a pretty good crowd. We did tie Livingston 21-21 in triple overtime, so that's usually a rare occurrence in high school football, certainly in the 40 years or so that I've been following it. And this week is the final game of the regular season. We play East Orange, at East Orange, Saturday, I want to clock. That's all I have. Oh, I think the soccer team still are doing, are in the first round or second round of the championships, right? Yeah.
They had a game today at 2:00. Anybody know how that turned out?
I should have asked my son before I left.
Okay. The girls won?
Okay, congratulations. Good job.
The girls are just off the chain phenomenal.
Mrs. Lab? Drama Mama?
Drama Mama, got a report on Broadway, Mr. Helyer and Lauren, who was here this evening, AKA Cookie. What a show. It was the first time that they've done this, and I think we had about 40 kids there from various choruses, is that correct? And they sang Broadway's... 63 members of the glee club. And, you know, I walked in, and being a former drama mom, I'm used to going into these things and finding, you know, a table of parents and about 15 kids. And I walked in, there must have been 200 people there. It blew me away. It was, ran out of programs, ran out of space. It was fantastic. And I have to say, our friend Lauren, quite a set of chops there, girlfriend, what a voice. But all of the kids, they did phenomenal, and I really hope this continues, because I know it was the first time that we've done this, and great night. Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Attended the New Jersey Board of Ed in Atlantic City, was very informative, attended many classes, special ed board, various things. And one thing I did meet with people from NJIT, and I know they're looking to set up a partnership with us to coordinate various programs, so I think...
Future ready services?
Yes, a future ready, yes.
We passed our resolution a couple of months ago.
Well, okay.
It's on the way.
All right, very good.
Mr. Robertson?
Okay. I missed the fun and entertainment of Broadway night, unfortunately. I went to something far more mundane, yet at points exciting, curriculum night and middle school curriculum night. And there, some concerns that had been expressed before came up again about the pathways in mathematics. Specifically, for those kids who are not in honors, even if they're making straight As, their pathway leads them on a course where they remain behind all the way up through high school, and makes it difficult for them to get into honors math at all in high school, and certainly to get into IMS, because they will not have reached the requirements necessary to do that by that time. So, and parents were very, there was a lot of frustration around that. So that's number one. Number two, what also came out of it is the need for, and Mr. Abu Hakman acknowledged that the math department's working on developing enrichment and better differentiation in how we teach math, because it means that if you have five different levels of functioning or performance in a class, and everyone's getting the exact same thing, that, you know, some of the higher-performing kids are still being left out and left behind when they can do better. So they're getting, you know, getting the A, but not being challenged with the same things that they could if the enrichment curricula offered what the honors math was also offering. So those are two, those were the kind of two nuggets of knowledge that came out of that. And there was a suggestion, a couple of suggestions, about potentially doing something we used to do years ago, actually, when Mrs. Brill and Mrs. Castellino used to get involved with it, and that is having a kind of parents' math group to discuss what are some of the issues and concerns, and talk about, you know, that would help to give more information with some of the strategies are that could be utilized. Also, at New Jersey School Boards, I too had a tremendous amount of fun, just first just networking with all the really talented and wonderful and dedicated people from other school districts and learning from them. A breakthrough course for me was the cybersecurity. And I'd like to, for the board at some point, to come back and have a discussion about that. I know we have about three consecutive firewalls, and we have a program that tracks server traffic. But some of the things that were exposed in the cybersecurity in terms of risk and versus investment were quite enlightening, and we may want to consider having a firm of the type, and I'm waiting for the presentation, to do a cybersecurity audit, because we don't currently have anybody in-house who has an IT degree. So it would be great if we had somebody do an IT, an actual cybersecurity audit, to make sure that all the social security numbers and private information of parents, teachers, children, staff are protected. Next, I also went to...
Consideration for a board goal.
Sorry?
That could be a consideration for a board goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, oh noble 10-year board member.
I'm not that old. Thanks.
I'm president, if you...
Sure.
I just want to update everyone. About three years ago, I thought it was important to provide opportunity to the students in West Orange about producing music in the 21st century. So with the support of the board and the superintendent administration, we started the Music Production Club under Tyrone Corbett, who is a well-known music producer in the music business. Well, this past summer, and more recently, the last two or three weeks, they produced what I'm calling, you know, the Mountaineer Fight Song now, and they revealed it at the Homecoming Day. And I'm hoping that the kids will work towards, my goal was to see the kids work towards producing a full CD or an EP, so that they can learn the music business from the production up all the way to the marketing and the promotion end of it. I'm hoping that once Mr. Corbett does send me these, what we call the stems in the music business, which are the different parts, that I can entice some of my Grammy-winning friends to do a remix or their remaster the version, so that it could be something really spectacular. So I'm hoping that's going to be coming down in the next few weeks.
The song was jamming.
Sounds good.
All right, it was serious, it was good.
So I take a chance to get the stem yet?
I have not.
And just a couple more things. There's your opportunities, Mr. Rutske. The Civil Air Command, I don't know if anybody over in the maker space visited them, but the Civil Air Command has a program where only, for only $35, a teacher or department head, or even a scout leader can sign up with them as one of their leaders, and they give, not a leader, but it's kind of an educator, they give you equipment and curricula that easily, from the rockets, the robotics, the flight simulators and everything, is way over $3,000, but you get it for $35 for signing up for your group, and it was quite amazing. Also, your students, if they're enrolled then, also under you in the program, before the age of 18, and this is something that our Rutske folks in engineering may want to take advantage of, can go up in the air. They can get five flights for free, both, I believe, both with and without engine, both the glider and... So that's an amazing, amazing opportunity. So I know that for scouts, I'm signing up immediately, but I'm going to pass the information on to Mr. DelGarcio, Mrs. Cohen, and Mr. Moore, and all the good folks, and our ROTC crew.
Did you give it to the superintendent?
Of course, who get it first? Sorry.
But I think the Air Force Junior ROTC, correct me if I'm wrong, they had a glider a couple of years ago.
Yeah, they have a...
They did a glider, yeah.
They will have a chance to go up in a glider, and they will, and they do have flight simulators.
They did a couple of years ago.
But there's a difference between if they have an added value opportunity, where they can go up not once, but five or six more times.
They've gone up a few times, I don't think five times, but they've gone up.
I know, my son's in it. So, yeah, but I'm saying that this is an added value opportunity for them to take advantage of. But I know I'm going to do it for scouting.
Yeah.
And last, we ran into our New Jersey, stepped, I stepped into the fund development area for, where the New Jersey School Boards and the grant office were doing their fund development seminar, and what I came away with is that we have work to do. We still need to actually write grants with our partners. And that's it. Oh, Tesla Foundation, I'm also going to pass on to you, they may have an opportunity for us from a grant standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Any further comment from... Okay. Now, the next board meeting will be November 6 at 8:00 PM, that's next Monday, to be held here at West Orange High School. And now it's time for petitions from residents. If you have a question or a comment, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and there's a three-minute timer. No takers? Okay. Great. Short night. Okay. That being said, may I have a motion, please, to adjourn? We have to return to closed session?
I'll move that. For purposes of personnel.
For purposes of personnel, yes. May I have a second?
Second.
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.